Ms. Alvera? Ms. Fight?
Here.
Ms. Lapierre? Mr. Delgado?
President.
Ms. Saratelli? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Lamo? Mr. Whitley?
You. Um, I would like to wish everyone a happy new year. And also, I'd like to recognize we have two board members joining us this year. Uh, we have Mr. Kevin Weaver and Ms. Kinggala Jackson. Just like to welcome you all aboard.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Why?
There's some business that we need to take care of.
Well, don't, aren't we supposed to follow the rules of order?
We can make a motion to go into closed session. I just need a second to do that motion.
Is it personnel issue?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fight? Now, Ms. Jackson? Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yeah, move the lights with sunshine on.
We are fine.
Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome any and all visitors. Um, you have an opportunity later on on the agenda to address the board if you want to. Uh, the reading of the minutes. Any questions concerning events?
Um, my motion for the minutes as, as it is.
Second.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fight?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
She stepped to the back.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes. A treasurer's report. Um, there's the treasurer, uh, Mr. Delgado is our new treasurer this year. But we're in the process of transitioning from the old treasurer to the new treasurer of the signatures. Um, that hasn't taken place yet. I'm still a signer on the, um, the account, so I'm still signing the checks this month for, uh, the bills.
Mr. Whitley sat with me. Um, I saw the check sheet was signing. He explained to me some of the procedure. We're gonna continue doing that. And Mrs. Key informed me that the transfer should happen for two, three weeks.
So, um, I make a motion to accept a treasurer's report for January 2013.
Is there discussion?
Um, just, the motion asked to be, I made the motion.
Yes, I see.
Second, okay, discussion?
Discussion.
Oh, well, you have, do you have a vote first?
Not just that.
Discussion, don't ask me. I'm sorry.
All right, there's a couple of things that I don't understand. Like for 12, 1812, it says T and L Caterer, $744.50. What's that?
You called and discussed it with Alexis the day, uh, after we had it. You discussed that with Alexis and you wanted to know, which were very angry when you spoke with her unfortunately, because it was for the staff holiday party. And you related to Ms. Nixon that you had a problem that the board didn't vote on. And what I-
Like, that's what that's for? No, my problem was, I'm sorry, you're misstating what I said to her. If that's what this is about-
That's what it is.
What I said to her was that we were not invited to the party and we felt, uh, people had come up and said, "Where were you at our business party?" Because we didn't know a thing about it.
Well, what happened is-
So, it was not that I-
Let me tell you what happened, Ms. Fight. The last meeting, if you remember, I had a vendor in to talk about the security cameras. You left before the, before the, the presentation was over. Ms. Saratelli left right after the election took place. And Mr. Lamo left before the presentation was over. There was no longer a forum. And so-
There was a forum. Mrs. Sticks was here.
No, there was not a forum.
Three people, a new one.
There was-
Mrs. Sticks wasn't?
We did not miss Fight.
We have to have a war with Fight.
Believe me when I tell you, there was no forum. So, I felt as though I would take the bullet and do past practice and go ahead and do the staff Christmas party for, for our people. We've never not done it. It's been a fixture for years. And so, therefore, uh, we didn't discuss it at a board meeting.
That wasn't the contention. The contentious, how come nobody called the board meeting and said, "We're having a Christmas party. Please come."
We have holiday party and, uh, you know, uh, I, I think the board knows I did not get to Mr. Whitley and we didn't discuss it. And so, uh, it wasn't an over, it wasn't a conscious oversight. We just had the luncheon for the staff and of course, board members invited to everything that we had. And unfortunately, that meeting broke up. And, and Ms. Fight, to be honest with you, uh, I, I had a lot of work. And I really, it just got past me to call every board member and individually invite you to the, because we were gonna discuss it. But everybody left. We didn't have a forum to discuss it. So, really, I made the decision to have this staff party.
It's fine. That's not the contention.
But I just told you why.
The contention is because nobody picked up the phone call. Anybody.
Ms. Ms. Fight, not to pass the buck, but there's your president.
Oh, so I should say to Mr. President, why didn't you not inform-
Well, I mean, I'm not a member of the board.
It was just explained.
I'm not a member of the board.
I'm speaking to the president.
I didn't get a call either. So, I mean, it's-
Nobody told you either?
But it's, well, it's a holiday party. It was a holiday party for the staff. Unfortunately, we all, I mean, it just didn't-
Can we point out where is the expenditure?
What do you think where is it?
We don't, we don't see it.
Ms. Fight has a budget for it.
Yes, it is. It's $744.50.
On the bill list?
On the bill list.
T and L Caterer.
I mean, six, sixteen.
It's 23616. And it's on December 18. And then not necessarily in chronological order, so it's still hard to find. It's about halfway down the table. So, that's what the expenditure is for.
Okay, um-
I would just say, yes, for future reference, if there's something that we should vote on to do an emergency, um, phone call vote. I know that meeting broke up because we lost the vote. But just for future reference, just to make sure everything's spread away, that's all. If it's past practice to vote on it, to do a phone vote.
Is that, is that necessary? It's past practice to have the Christmas party? We didn't have the board-
That's what I'm saying, for future reference. For future reference.
Is there a following of what the board has to approve? Is there like a floor? Anything over a certain amount the board has to approve in advance?
We usually do approve these budgets for parties.
Oh, yeah.
It's in the manuals. I didn't see anything on that call.
I have, if you wanna go on what's in the minutes. The board, because I have to be able to, um, operate, I can spend up to $5,000 and then report back to the board. Anything over $5,000, that is not a typical expenditure. Uh, in the past, that's what the director has been able to do because we have things come up. You have plumbing issues. You have electrical issues. If I have to call the board for a vote for everything that happens during the course of a month, your building would suffer. So, that is, that's the situation. So, I have, uh, I, I can sign up to $5,000 and so I signed for $722.
Just to clarify, I just said as a suggestion, because that was past practice. Then if we wanna continue that practice, then that would be a way of-
But what I'm saying is that it was a false short on the board. It was the board-
The board left.
The board left. That's-
I understand that. No, I understand that. This isn't a referendum, Mrs. Key.
Yeah.
This isn't the referendum, Mrs. Key. This is just- Trying to find some reasons.
You have given me the okay to sign for a certain amount. And I did. Because as I said, I think the, um, the demonstration was very important for the security cameras. And as I said, Ms. Saratelli, Ms. Fight, and Ms. Lamo left before the demonstration was over. Had I known that board members were going to leave, we would have taken care of all voting issues before we started the presentation. But nobody announced that they were leaving early, so that we didn't finish all the business of the board. And when people got up and left, we no longer had a forum.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fight?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes. Uh, presentation approval of the bills of July, excuse me, January 11, 2013. I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second amendment.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fight?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes. Reports of standing committees. Uh, there were no standing committee meetings. Uh, reports of special committee meetings. I don't have it. Because I believe it, I believe it, I believe it, I believe it, I didn't have it.
Okay.
The report of the library director.
Um, I just, you get my report in writing and I don't feel the need to go over it point by point. But there are usually just a couple of things that I might highlight. One of the things that I'm very pleased about is the increase of traffic to our website this year. We've had a 20% increase in traffic. Uh, according to our webmaster, Lonnie Johnson, is probably due to redesign, maybe, uh, ease, ease of use. And so, that's good. Uh, our, our website was viewed 31,000 times, uh, 31,000 and some change during the month of September. And one of the things that we aspire to do and that we continue to work to do is to have the website be our 24-hour branch. We aspire to have that website, uh, in such a way that when the library is closed, you can still go and search our databases. You can see what books are available. You can put them on reserve. You can get a library card. All of these things can be, you can download, uh, books to your different devices. Uh, all these things are possible. And so, Lonnie Johnson, as I indicated, is our webmaster. And he is really endeavoring to keep that website current, but at the same time, simple. Have you ever gone to webs, go to our website and look at the page? It's a simple page to use. Sometimes you go on a website and it's just, that's so much stuff on it. You don't even know where to begin. And so, I think that the ease of use, uh, also is a factor in the increased usage. Um, one of the things that I'm really happy about highlighting from, and look at this, it's all technology. But one of the things I'm really happy to highlight is a class that, that Robert Barbanell. Robert Barbanell is the branch director. And he, uh, has been giving classes on sale, on eBay, and Amazon. And let me tell you, people come to those classes because they want businesses from their homes. They've been well attended and they have been well received. And so, we're happy, uh, we're happy about that. Uh, books are still our business. Books are always going to be our business, I hope. But remember, this library pays an annual fee to be part of a service where we get together, pool our resources, we buy books collectively. I'm talking about books that are downloadable. And so, if you have a device at home, whether it's a Kindle, the notebook, or a whole bunch of other devices where you can, uh, read electronically, you can tap into that, that selection. I was talking to a friend and she just bought a, got a book for Christmas. And she's talking about buying books. I said, "Go to your library." Why go to, you know, a service where you have to pay for the books? When most public libraries have that, and we do, we do. We're very happy to have that service for our patrons. And you know what? It's going up in usage.
Oh, it is.
This is our third year being part of it. And, uh, we run classes. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Johnson is running a class in January because why? So many people that know, can know for the holidays and they are, they don't know how to use them. So, we're giving, because when you go to the website and overdrive is really, uh, where you go to try to figure out how to use this thing. It's almost simpler. If you come to a class, we project it on the screen. Mr. Johnson is an excellent teacher. And so, you can leave there knowing how to go on our website, knowing how to download books to your device. And you borrow them for a specific amount of time. And then they have to go back. So, it's, it's, it's a wonderful thing. And so, the last thing that I did, that I'm excited about, Mr.- One of the things that I like to do at these meetings, I really like you to know who the staff members are and what they're doing. And you've heard me speak about Robert Barbanell. He is our branch manager. And Robert is doing unbelievable programming in the branch. The caliber of programming that we're having at the branch now is beginning to measure up to what we're doing right here at the main library. And in honor of Women's History Month, we have Dr. Helle, Helle Brugner from Fairleigh Dickinson University. She's going to come to talk about our daughters, our soldiers, in honor of Women's History Month. The other thing that I need to tell you, and I think the flyer might have been in your packet, we have rescheduled the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra uh, because they were, uh, brainwashed by Hurricane Sandy. And so, they are supposed to do a program here on Saturday. I think it's a date on that I like. They're doing it on Saturday afternoon and it's something for everyone. And so, if you like jazz, I do the jazz. If you like show tunes, then I do the show tunes. It's something for everyone. So, I really hope you'll talk it up. It's not a cheap program. It's a prestigious group and they're very fortunate to have it.
Was that called?
It is-
It's the first year?
Uh, on the 26th.
It's 3:00 PM on January the 26th. It's, uh-
Saturday, yeah. Uh, reading of communications? Rule of communication.
One thing that I received, uh, I did receive communication, formal communication from the mayor about Ms. Jackson and, uh, Mr. Weaver. And so, and, and it was accompanied by your resumes, which are quite impressive, I might say. And, uh, I'd like to take this opportunity, as the record, the library, to say to you, I welcome your expertise and your influence for it because if you're anything like you write up, you're in good shape. So.
Uh, unfinished business.
The security system. Um, the security system, uh, you had an opportunity last month. I actually invited a vendor here to present the system. Um, I also want to remind you that on this one, Mr. Weaver, we did not go out to bid. And the reason we did not go out to bid is because Tyco Systems has a state contract. And so, when there is a state contract, that means the state has done the vetting for us. And so, if they have a state contract number, that says the state has vetted them. This is a good price for what you're getting. This is a price that they quoted us and they can't change it. So, that one, we didn't go out for bid and that's the reason.
Appreciate this.
We, it's a state contract. Um, you had the opportunity to receive a packet. You had an opportunity to hear the history of the company. And you had the opportunity to see what the system can do. And so, uh, when I talked to Mr. Whitley this afternoon, I said, "I don't know if the board is in a state of readiness" because even though we have Ms. Jackson here and Mr. Weaver, they have not had access to any of that information. And I don't know how comfortable you would feel voting on something that is going to cost this library over $17,000.
I say that we just need to live until next month. Ms. Key, can you just forward them some of the information that was, uh, provided about the, uh, the camera system that we're looking to, um, you know, move into the, I mean, the district, excuse me, the library? And, um, it's something that we need. So, you know, but like, like she said, it's a $71,000 contract and-
It's a replacement of existing systems?
No, it's, it's putting in a completely new system. Yeah. So, once you get the details, hopefully by next month, the advance date will be ready to move forward.
And we have been advised by law enforcement that we really do need to have cameras inside the building and in the parking lot as a way of protecting our patrons and protecting ourselves and our property. So, we really want to move on that.
That's it, my finished proposal. Okay, please.
Well, we have standing committee.
Um, I will have that prepared for next month's meeting. New, uh, committee appointed, choosing out the new committees for the board and some policy.
For Ms. Jackson and Mr. Weaver, um, the standing committees are appointed by the board personnel. And so, there's a description of all of them in your bylaws. So, you'll know exactly what committees they are. Um, and for new business policy updates, I really, uh, think, and we've talked about this, but as Ms. Fight indicated earlier, it's very difficult sometimes to get together and debate. Some people work, some people don't. Some people can do evening meetings, some people can't. But as the director, I would like to at least suggest to you that this year we make an effort to really update our policies. I can't put them online. Most libraries now have all of their policies online. But our policies, I don't think, I've gone through them. I don't think they have to change, appreciate it. They're good, basic policies. But like everything changes, especially the internet policy, for example, we need to look at that. We need to update it. Uh, I think we need to make sure they're current so that they can go online. Because I've had people ask me, "Well, why isn't the Elizabeth Public Library's policies online?" Well, I think we need to really make certain, to understand exactly what we want them to say. What I would like to submit to the board is this. Would you like, and I mean, if you look in your trustee manual, I checked it before I'm bringing this to you, you can do it one of two ways. You can decide as the board that you wanna take a call, go through them and adjust them. What I would like to submit to the board is that I would like to form committees of staff members who do or work in that area. For example, the IT person, uh, for the internet, uh, policy. That the circulation, head circulation for the circulation policy. These are the people that work in these areas. And so, they are able to give you suggestions. They certainly can dictate to you, but they can come up with a list of suggestions for you. Because if the board decides that you wanna go through this call, I don't think we'll get it done this year. What do you think, Ms. Alvera?
I, uh, we can't go through, no. I, I think that it would be better for the staff members who are here and day to day to formulate something. We should look at them and then revise as needed or make recommendations for revisions, right? Discuss it together, come to an agreement and then-
Approve or deny.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't feel comfortable forming policy from scratch or taking what's, if it's very outdated, as you're saying, and we need it to be updated now, especially with internet policies and the, the usage of the library, the day to day thing. I think that we definitely should have staff members, um, come up with something to submit to us to review.
Uh, if it is okay with the board, I would like to submit to you that the two policies we start on are the circulation policy. And that deals with people being able to get cards, how materials are borrowed, what is the lending times, whatever fines. And the other one is the internet policy. Because the board needs to be aware of one of the issues right now that we're having that I'd like to see part of the policy. We are practicing it. But it's come to the fore since that policy was made. And that is, uh, flash drive, USB drives. Are you, you're-
I'll, I'll show everyone one of these.
USB drives is a flash drive. And it's a small drive that fits into your, plugs into your computer and all of his personal information can be on there. His bank records, his social security card, his address, his phone numbers. What happens is that people put them into our computers, they leave them. Now, you need to know that we have, by every computer, we have it written. The library is not responsible for the flash drive. Because let me tell you, would you hold that up again, Mr. Delgado? Look at this flash drive. There's no name on it. It is nondescript. And we are obligated to protect people's privacy. If Ms. Alvera comes in and says, "I know this is my flash drive. It's black." Well, we get untold numbers of flash drives. And so, we, what we do is we reformat it. So, there's no information on it. Because we can't, so we can't, but we can't give it out. Suppose we hand your information out to the wrong person.
I would just rather you throw it away.
But I still have to reformat it because if somebody gets out the garbage.
No, I understand.
By reformatting it, we're wiping it clean for your protection. And people think, "But no, I, I want you to go through and find mine." But you know what? We are, you are liable as a board if somebody gets your flash drive with your social security number. And so, we don't give them back. And so, but that's not in our policy. But that's a practice that most libraries have undertaken and that's what they do.
I would just say, um, definitely have staff input for that, the board, that we receive, whatever their recommendations are, with ample enough time. So, we could have time to go over in our, maybe in our board packets, include these are the recommendations.
But what possibly is going to happen is you have a policy committee. Mr. Whitley has to appoint people to that committee, but you have a policy committee. Because as Mr. Whitley said, the board meeting is for the business of the board. You need to meet as a committee, possibly. Well, not possibly, definitely. You need to meet as a board and go through there. And what I will do is I will give you the policy as it was. I will italicize or highlight what the new suggestions are so that you will be able to look at a section and know what it used to be and what we're suggesting. So that you can go through it point by point. And then, when it goes to the committee that will deal with it, that committee will come back to you and-
And report to us.
And make recommendations.
Make recommendations.
Would we have opportunity to talk to your person who's the expert in that area to find out why they did a certain thing or how would you?
Well, the-
Well, the problem is, uh, if the committee wants to come in and talk with staff members, it's an issue because we're so short-staffed, it's, it's hard for them to just come in.
I'm just saying, especially on the LP or this, that's real, you have to have a good understanding, a grasp of that.
What will happen is, and I'm, and I, and I think that this is going to be the most expedition for the handler. What will happen is we'll bring you the issues that we feel need to be included or tweaked or changed. When you meet as a committee, you come back to us and say, "We have a question about that." Rather than going through everything with you, only the things that you have questions about and we'll take it back and get the answer.
And we can submit it to you and maybe you have the answer for us right there or maybe you're just coming back.
No, I'll take it back to the committee.
Okay.
Because, you know, even I'm the director here, I don't have the expertise in these areas that people who work in them every day have.
That's fine.
So, I'm dependent on them, but I would make certain, Mr. Weaver, that you got your question answered. Is that fair?
Yeah, I, it may not be a question of understanding sometimes of what, especially-
Sometimes you need that give and take. Sometimes you need that give and take. And if it's something that's big and it's not one little thing that we can answer quickly, then we'd have to figure a way to get, uh, to get with you so that there can be some give and take. Because the policy, the policy is one of your primary responsibilities. So, you need to feel totally comfortable with what, because it's gonna go online. It's gonna go online.
I believe it or not, I've checked other library, um, websites and all of their policies.
Are online, yeah.
That, every, you know.
And we've talked about it in, in other years, but we just haven't followed through on it.
Yeah, I think that's something we could definitely, or should definitely achieve this year.
Because it lets the outside people know how we operate. And so, that's important. And that's it for this information.
Okay, comments from the public? Welcome in.
I must, I must tell you, Ted is probably one of our staunchest users. He uses, he uses our facilities. He attends our programs. And he is an educated library user and I appreciate you coming to this.
Because of the leadership.
Thank you, Ted. We're having a mutual admiration, but no, I mean that in all sincerity. It, it means a lot to have people knowledgeable about the library to come to these meetings. And I thank you.
All right, the board definitely appreciates you being here.
Good set.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Um, okay, we close, um, closed session? Motion to go into closed session?
Second motion.
Want to close session? I couldn't stand another closed session like that.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fight?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Yes.